The meeting is called to order. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 21st, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Pig students, you're required to stay till nine o'clock unless the meeting gets out early. Earlier, when you're finished, make sure you come up, get your sheet signed, and fill out one of the sheets on the side over there. Can we have introductions? Oh, wait, hold, sorry. We met from six to seven and executive discussed special education matters and personnel issues. And at this time, can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, I was rushing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's try that again.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Meredith Moriarty.
Michael Cooper.
Charmaine Woodjessinger.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lenhart.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Judy Keigho.
Can I get a motion to approve the March 8th, 2018 Board of Education meeting? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Is there anybody here from Student Senate today? Come on up. You can take the mic right out and just state your name.
Alright, awesome. So, is this working?
Yes.
Alright, so, I'm Renato Meritata.
I'm Dave Harvey.
And we're here from Senate, just to talk about what we've been doing for the last week or two. So, we're continuing to look at the responses from the student forum. That gives us a lot of information of what students need. And so, I want to highlight two things that we're trying to take action on. So firstly, we're trying to install some speed bumps in the parking lot. We're getting complaints that people are moving too fast, and that could pose potential safety risks for our students when they're trying to get to school. And so, we know that there's problems with snowplows as they can't get over them, so we're looking into putting indented ones. Or not indented, I don't know.
Concave or something like that.
Concave. Speed bumps in the parking lot. So also, as the spring approaches, students want to go outside during the school day, and so we're looking up to opening out the courtyard so students could go out there. And we're making committees to do these, to make it easier. Also, we're trying to bring back Mr. Bethlehem, as there's an increase in people that want to do that. And we have a few candidates that we're approving that will be good. And that's about it. So, any questions?
Do you have funding for the courtyard? Like, are you raising money on the committees? How is that working?
So, I'm pretty sure the only funding that we would need are walls so that teachers don't get distracted. I know that's an issue. I think we do have funding if you want to get like picnic tables. But we're trying to do it in an area where there are not too many classrooms, so it's not going to have students distracted if they're in class, and they're going to look at kids that are outside.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anybody have anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you. So yesterday, I did send out a letter to families about school safety. In the last few weeks, I've had several emails, calls, just about general procedures regarding school safety. So, we had a district safety team meeting last week, and provided an update on things we have in place and plans to address concerns moving forward. One of the things that was in the letter was working with the Bethlehem Police Department and the tip line, and the number was included there. So, if people are concerned about something, there's a tip line that they can call, and it's in operation 24/7. So, I'd also like to congratulate our student musicians and staff for another outstanding district music festival. I see Mr. Norman over there. Every year I attend, I'm so impressed with the talent of our students and the quality of our music program, so, great job. The New York State budget deadline is fast approaching. We do anticipate an on-time budget. Unfortunately, we don't anticipate extra money. But we have recently seen some positive indications that the caps probably will not go through that were proposed, and the Special Ed Summer Program is not being supported as well. So, those will be helpful moving forward with future budgets. So, and that's my report. Thanks.
Up next is the Board of Education report. I also attended the Orchestra Festival, and thank you to Mr. Norman for coordinating it. It was a great event, as always. I'd love to hear the string instruments. Also, this week, tomorrow's opening night for Beauty and the Beast, and there's still some tickets left, but Friday, Saturday, and Sunday look like they will be sold out shows, so get your tickets. And if you're a student Thursday, it looks like it's a good night to come. Anyone else?
Well, speaking of plays, I attended the fifth grade play at Slingerland's, Wish upon a Star. And especially not just by participation of the students, but the fact that Mr. Beetaw, our fifth grade teacher, both wrote and directed the play, and it really was wonderful. So, I was glad to be able to do that.
I also attended the fifth grade play, and Lester is a genius. The way he wove all those stories together, the way he got a message across to the students, and perhaps more importantly, the way he was able to use all 80 fifth graders and move them through this play almost seamlessly. He did a wonderful job, and the kids were phenomenal.
Right, because there are three groups of students, and each role in the play was played by a different student in each of those three groups, which was great. It really was seamless.
I want to first thank Mr. Nardelli for all of his videos and instruction on the change over to Gmail. I really do enjoy his YouTube videos, and I think many people have benefited from them, including myself. So, I just want to appreciate all the support he's been giving us during this time. The other thing, I went to the Orchestra Festival, and I think the staff, the parents, and the musicians did a fantastic job in fabulous performances. And the one thing I didn't notice, when you're, what I find myself now in large group meetings of across district representation, I am noticing the diversity that was not here when my son went through here. And I know we've talked about diversity as a board and as a priority, but I do want to encourage the board to think of it as a long-term, long-range process, and the board has to be involved in supporting the superintendent in her efforts. I know there's a committee, but I think it's going to extend beyond that. It has to be a comprehensive and strategic initiative with the superintendent. And I also know, because this is the kind of work I do, and I've done it with boards, it also means the board will have to do its own training and its own reflection in preparation to participate in that kind of endeavor.
I wasn't able to go to the Orchestra Festival. I really wanted to, and I sent a note to Dave Norman indicating I couldn't, but I saw a picture, and I just wanted to make a comment. Years ago, we were able to have the orchestra. The band and the choral were always in the lower gym, but the Orchestra Festival actually could fit on the stage. And I just, I mean, just to give you an example how much the strings program has grown over the years, and in such a wonderful way, certainly very positive, and certainly to your credit and to predecessors also, to have seen that rapid growth in the program.
Yes, and we're also adding a third orchestra next year, I believe, possibly. So, that's how much the program's grown, that they can't fit everybody on the stage in those two sections, that there's going to be a third one. So, I think that's, that's great. So, that's wonderful. Alright, tonight's presentation, we'll have Judy Keigho pick up the presentation. Yes, you're saying good evening back. The budget is where we tie together all of the district's programs, and where we make sure that the goals that we have set are all properly funded.
And we've had about four budget meetings so far, where we've rolled it out. Tonight, we're going to start with just some quick recaps and answering some questions that the board has raised from the prior sessions. And then the main event tonight is joint presentation from Dave Hurst and Kathy Johnston, reviewing both the general and special education services. I will then pop back up here and give you some projections for this current fiscal year, and go over the multi-year projections, and how we're looking for fund balance numbers as well. When we were here for our March 7th meeting, based on the changes that we had proposed as part of those discussions, we were able to bring the baseline gap of $3.3 million down to just under $2.1 million. And as each budget session goes by, we find we get additional information. As Superintendent Monroe mentioned, we hope to have budget information as we go into the next meeting, and that should answer some of these remaining questions that we One of the questions from the last meeting related to the breakout of the costs on the capital outlay project. This is limited to one building, so every year, we try to find a project that's going to fit within that $100,000 threshold from the state. And this year's recommended project is to replace a very large compressor in the Transportation Department. The design work to complete the room that is going to hopefully mitigate some of the noise that comes from running this compressor is going to be about $19,000. The machine itself and the installation should be the bulk of the cost at about $65,000. And then, the room enclosure would be about another $16,000. So, the design work is still going on. Obviously, it needs to be approved in the school vote before that can move forward, but that at least gives you an idea of the cost components for that project.
Is the design being done in-house?
It's being done by our architects.
Okay, so the design is by our architect and firm?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And then it still has to get submitted to State Ed, where their reviewers will take a look at it and approve it before we can proceed. But because of the size of it, it's a little bit quicker than other large-scale projects. One of the questions that you had also was, what happens if on our power purchase agreement that we have with Forefront Power, what if they don't hit their commercial operations date? Which, per their agreement with us, it has to be up and running and generating energy from the solar panels by November 30th, 2018. If they don't hit that deadline, we have the legal right to walk away from the deal, which doesn't get us very far. Time has really been of the essence with this project. Our choices practically would be to either give them another extension, or we might, if we walk away, we would have to start the whole process over again, which would involve an RFP and trying to find a developer who would give us savings that were significant, and they would have to find a site, and the whole process would go again. So, they are optimistic that they're going to be able to hit this, and they are, of course, going through their reviews at the town right now. So, we're hopeful that they hit that, and we expect that they will, based on what we So that's the wrap-up of what we had as pending matters from the last meeting, and now I'll turn it over to Dave and to Kathy. I'll come sit back there.
Okay, so, thank you. We're going to be sort of bouncing back and forth as it's a dual presentation. So as Judy mentioned, for those in the audience, I'm Dave Hurst, the Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Programs.
And I'm Kathy Johnston, the Director of Special Education.
So it does feel like, I was just here last week, but it was quite some months ago, to discuss, you know, the academic program and all of the highlights that our students, in terms of their achievement across the district. And really, you know, that presentation isn't possible without the support of the budget process, because it's through the budget process that we're able to put these programs into place, that our students are able to highlight their talents and thrive under these circumstances. And obviously, taking a look at this is just a list of some of the things we've added over the past couple of years. But none of these ads could have been possible without the support of the community, the board, and obviously, our principals, supervisors, and CSE chairs that are here tonight to support the presentation. So you can see, we've added quite a few things over the last couple of years, and in this budget process, we will be able to maintain all of these programs and continue to extend and thrive and give students all of the opportunities to be successful. In Ms. Monroe's State of the Schools address, she mentioned the AP program that we have, and that we're, you know, students are earning, you know, over 4,000 credits of college equivalency credit, which saves in the neighborhood of $1.5 million. But also, I think this was just recently released by the U.S. News &amp; World Report, and I think this paints an even better picture in that not only, it's not just sheer sort of volume, but just the percentage of our students that are earning college credit, that are attempting, and then finally earning college credit. So, 52% of all seniors graduate having attempted at least one AP course. But that, that's not really the outstanding number. The outstanding number is that 47% actually receive the credit. So you can see on the list here, Saratoga has, for instance, 62% of its students attempting credit, but, you know, just over 40% actually receive that credit. So when you're looking at the graph, you really want the green and the blue bar to be exactly the same size, because that means every student that attempts credit does earn it. So, we are leading the suburban council in the number of students that are actually receiving credit. And I will say, we're doing this with an open enrollment policy, right? We don't have very strict prerequisites, like schools, so North Colony, for instance, East Greenbush, in order to take an honors or AP class, if you don't maintain a certain average in prerequisite courses, you're not eligible. We don't have those requirements, right? Our teachers make recommendations, for sure, but students can self-select and take any honors or AP course that they want to challenge themselves with. And it obviously hasn't harmed our results, so we're very proud of that. Our students are making choices to challenge themselves, and they're doing very well with those challenges. So I wanted to highlight that before we get into some budget numbers.
And one thing that I think the graph doesn't take into account is we are a smaller district than some of those other districts.
Right, well, so these are pure percentages, so...
Okay, oh, they're not numbers.
So it's able to compare, yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
But in the ballpark of 50% of our students are receiving AP credit.
Question I have is, with classes that are showing more interest, such as the Cisco Network Academy, if the class gets filled to its capacity, how do you determine which students are going to get a seat and which ones aren't?
So we run a lottery, but we're typically fairly, so, we, that hasn't happened with the Cisco class yet, but I can speak to, it has happened with the Computer Science class. So what we've done is we've given priority to students that would not have the opportunity to take that class in the future. So, for instance, the Intro to Computer Science class, the first year we ran it, because it was through an NSA grant, we were only able to run one section. So that first year, we basically were only able to fill it with seniors, because obviously they weren't going to be back the next year to take the opportunity. Moving forward, we've been able to offer, fortunately, we've been able to offer enough sections of these that we haven't had to lock anybody out.
Okay.
But if we do, again, it's a lottery system, but also give them priority to students that would not have access in future years, if that makes sense.
So you wouldn't ever make a prerequisite, so you would never look at, say math grades?
There are math prerequisites in that. We would suggest that, like, you don't take Computer Science without having at least completed geometry and are concurrently taking Algebra II at a bare minimum. But again, if a student chooses to override it, we don't have a prerequisite system that bars students from taking courses.
What about at the middle school? Are you finding that there is, for the art and technology classes for the eighth graders?
So we're filling, we added additional sections last year, so we have two sections of the art and two sections of the technology, and they're both, the arts not quite full, but the technology typically fills out.
Okay.
And we do have to go to a lottery for those.
Are there still students that want to take the class and are not able to?
Correct. I think last year, we had to do a lottery for the technology.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, turn that over.
So, this slide is a follow-up also to the State of the Schools that Ms. Monroe did in February, I believe. This was a slide that we showed, and I felt like I wanted to explain it a little more clearly. So, this is data from SED. We provide them with information every year. This is 15-16 data, similar to, I think your data was 15-16 also. It's usually a few years out. But the pie chart, the orange part of it, shows special education students that are spending 80% or more of their time in regular ed, which is obviously something that we want. And the state averaged that year was 58%, but at Bethlehem, our rate was 72%. So we work really hard to try to have our students in the Gen Ed classroom as much as possible. And one of the ways that we're able to do that is, I'm going to, whoops. This is what we call a continuum of special education services. It's a little small, so I hope you can see it. Basically, at the top is general education with no supports at all. And as you work your way down the pie, it becomes more restrictive. So, it has resource room where a student might leave the general ed class for 45 minutes a day and then go back in. But one of the things that's really been helpful in getting to that 72% is that we offer a program that is not mandated by the state, but is called a co-teach program, where we have a special education teacher pushed into a classroom with a number of identified students. That's what we do at the elementary level, and then we do what we call direct consultant teacher at the secondary level. And that seems to really help, have helped to push those numbers up. So I just wanted to share that, since it had been shown. So moving into a look at what special education is looking like, there's been a significant amount of conversation around the increase in mental health in students, both at Bethlehem, in New York, and throughout the country. I mean, it's something that none of us can escape, listening to the news on a regular basis. And I thought it was really important for folks to know that this increase in mental health concerns is existing in our students right from preschool through postgraduate. I mean, we're seeing children as young as three with some pretty significant diagnoses, and we're trying to figure out programming for them. We've seen an increase in just diagnoses, such as generalized anxiety, depression, bipolar, to name a few. There's a few others listed over there to the right. There's been a fairly significant increase in hospitalizations. So, we have students that are special education students that end up hospitalized because of their mental health concerns. We also have a lot of regular ed students that none of us even knew had a concern. And I will get information, because when they are in the hospital, there's a portion of, an educational portion that they request that we be able to provide for them. So, we've definitely seen an increase there. And some of that has led to an increase in some of our out-of-district placements, having students go to an environment that they are more equipped to help students with mental health. So as we've watched that increase, myself, the staff in special education have partnered with the Counseling Department, with, with Dave and Gen Ed, to really take a look at our programs. So, this was the first piece that we added, which is our response to intervention. We've got two systems going, and I'm going to have Dave begin with the first part.
So as you know, thanks to your support, we added over the past few years, response to intervention specialists for academics at each of the buildings, so that we can better serve all of our students. You know, before these ads, we were basically only able to service students in grades three, four, and five in ELA in math, and we weren't catching even all of those students that really needed the additional supports. We're now able to, with all of the specialists at each building, we're able to start providing supports as early as kindergarten. So we're really, we're hitting about 175 students on average in ELA, and 175 in math, K5, to really support their academic program. And as Kathy will speak to when we get to the special ed numbers, we've seen a drastic decrease in referrals to special ed from students coming out of that K2 realm. And that really is the focus of RTI, is to ensure that students are being supported in their core curriculum, so that the need for special education services are diminished. And we are seeing that play out. So the next phase of the RTI system was, we have the academic system that's been in place three to four years now, and this year, we implemented the behavior system, which I'll talk, have Kathy talk about.
So, at this time last year, we were, had come to you, I had come to you to ask if this was something that we would be able to add. We've talked about RTI for behavior for a while, and this year, we took one of our special education teachers, and they became a behavioral coach. They've worked in all five of our elementary buildings, putting together a plan for RTI for behavior. So, one of the, the key things they did was put teams together, go-to teams in each of the buildings. So when a student is having a behavioral concern, there was a team of people that they could go to. So that's been really helpful. They've worked on use of common language and themes within the building that you'll see when you go in, where there's maybe three terms that every building is using, and the kids have, they hear this language from no matter who's in, who's in the building. So, we found that this has been really helpful, and this will continue as we move forward. But it's really helped us with some of the behavioral referrals, because before, no one would know what to do, so they would automatically send the kids to special education. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about how our programs have been operating, and then our plan moving forward. So, we've been very fortunate here at Bethlehem to have school psychologists, school counselors, and school social workers. In some districts, you'll find that they might have one psychologist or very few people. We've been very, we're very grateful to have the staff that we have. But as we really took a closer look at what was going on, we realized that these three departments were operating separately. So our school psychologists, we have seven, and they really spent the primary amount of time doing evaluations on students. Our school counselors, we have them at all three levels. At the elementary level, prior to this year, when we added some counselors, were mostly doing small group work in the primary grades, friendship groups, banana splits, that sort of thing. The middle school, the counselors were doing individual, small, and large group work. But then when they came up to the high school, really, the counselors were doing primarily college and career readiness. So if you had a student that really needed a go-to person, it was different in each of the buildings. Our school social workers, also, we have seven, they were, they continue to provide IEP services. But we don't have one in every building. So you might have a school social worker in one building on Monday, providing services, and then if we had a student that had somewhat of a crisis, that person might help them. But then on Tuesday, when the student came back in, that social worker might be working in another building. So, with our coordinated group, we looked at providing something a little different for next year, which we're referring to as a coordinated care team, where those three groups of professionals will be working together. And some of that is allowing them time to really work together. So there will be a psychologist, a social worker, and a counselor assigned to each of our seven buildings, and they will work together. They'll have time this summer to do planning together. There will be coordinated time, so that they have time to meet. It's a huge piece of it, to really get to talk about, I put a behavior plan together for this student, you know, tomorrow, we need to do this and this. So, although our buildings are of different sizes, obviously, some of these folks will need to spend a little bit of time in another building doing evals or doing some therapy, but they'll coordinate that together as a group. And that's something that we haven't, haven't done in the past. So, that's our plan for moving forward.
Can I ask a couple? Yeah, there we go.
As far as the school counselors go, if, if you have the majority of the high school going towards college and that kind of prep, how are they going to, how much time are they going to lose from that, or is that going to be supplemented? Because it's a new program, and you're taking, you're giving them time to do this, but they also have the other duties.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Fishbein, for even asking that, because there was a piece that I forgot to mention. So, we also added a few other things up here at the high school, because the college and career piece is extremely important. So, this year that we're in, we dedicated two of the counselors here at the high school to being ninth-grade counselors. So they're not doing that college and career piece. So, that really helped with the transition for students coming up from eighth grade to this building. So, we will continue with those two folks doing that. We also added a student assistance counselor. So, again, I thank the board for allowing us to have these ads, because that person has been helping with students who struggle with getting themselves into school, or maybe just getting into school and having a safe place. We have a mindfulness room that we had mentioned, we've put here at the high school. So trying to build in those things to make this population of students feel a little bit more comfortable with coming in. So, we would be using those people to, to continue doing some of the, the work here up at the high school, and having the other counselors, because we have eight...
The one counselor, one social worker, one psychologist is...
The one counselor, one social worker, one psychologist is really the elementary, because the middle school and high school have multiple counselors already, and they'll continue doing what they've been doing. So there's, they still are doing college and career prep. They already were reorganized this year. So the ninth grade, as Kathy said, were, there's two assigned ninth grade counselors, and the student assistance counselors were added. So the ninth graders, when they transition to tenth grader, will be reassigned a counselor for ten through twelve.
Those are the guidance counselors.
Guidance counselors, right.
And so what you're saying is, this is not going to take anything away from the programs that the, say, the seniors or juniors are currently getting?
Right.
And some of that work we, we are doing right now, and it is not taking away from those students.
Right, the counseling change, guidance counseling change at the high school already is in place this year.
Okay, maybe what I'm missing is, it seems like you're adding to the pile.
We did.
And, but you're not, you're, you're adding programming.
No, we added FTE. So if you're called, so the student assistance counselor does not have a student caseload. So every student is still assigned a counselor, which their primary focus is the college and career piece. We also have a student assistance counselor that does not have a caseload. So they're free to see any student. So that's, so there's the added value of the extra counselor that's picking up the social emotional piece that we're now able to address in a more systematic way.
And that's just in the high school?
Correct. So the middle school is still, but the counselors there have always done in-class, in-class demonstrations, in-class discussions, lessons, they're still pulling, so the middle school model has not changed. We didn't have enough social emotional support at the high school, which is why we added the student assistance counselor for this school year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And you also added the guidance supervisor, there's another position there.
Two years ago.
How has that, your position, worked so far this year? Is that person?
The student assistance counselor?
Yes, is that person overworked, or are they underworked? I mean, does it seem like that one position is enough?
Initially, they were overworked, because I think people didn't really know how to utilize them, so any issue became, let's just send it to the student assistance counselor, where their role really specialized more in the social emotional piece. Students having academic struggles, they should still see their counselor that they would typically have seen in the past. So once we sort of navigated that, we seem to be in a good spot with, in terms of the number of folks that she is seeing. The mindfulness room has been a huge help. We have several students that drop into there just to kind of relax and get themselves in, regroup, get themselves in a better place before they return to class. Having a K-12 counseling supervisor, that's really what's allowing us to reorganize this. Because in the past, I, you know, part of the reason the folks were operating in silos is that we're, there was no real oversight to all of the different areas. Whereas we, this year, the K-12 counseling supervisor oversees both the counselors and the social workers, because there's so much overlap between what they do. And then special education still oversees the psychologists. But the three of us really, we've spent a lot of time this year looking at the overall structure of the, of the, you know, we're calling it sort of a coordinated care program, mental health program, really looking at that structure to make sure that we're not operating in silos, and that there are folks getting together and talking and sharing responsibility for when a student is struggling.
So I just want to make sure, so the coordinated care team is at the elementary level?
It's really K-12, but I mean, the new piece of it, I guess, is the elementary level, because they have not had in the past a dedicated counselor and social worker and psychologist to each building. So now every building will have that team in place. That's not to say, again, because of building size, we're just kind of calling that their home base. They might be pulled from time to time to other buildings, but each building at the elementary level have this team. At the middle and high school, they will also have a dedicated psychologist, dedicated social worker, but numerous guidance counselors.
How, how is that going to be implemented? How are these three silos getting together to coordinate the care?
Well, we're having our kickoff meeting in May with the group, and, oh, like I said, over the summer, we're going to be spending a lot of time ensuring that they understand the new roles, responsibilities.
So specifics haven't been developed yet in regards to the?
The other thing, I think you'll, you'll hear therapists say, the gift of time is huge. So if, if we set things up separately, I mean, it's not like these folks didn't want to spend time together. It's the way the schedule worked out. So if we say that every morning they all start, and I'm not saying it has to be morning, they're going to work together as teams, but there has to be dedicated time where they are in the building together, saying, this is the plan for this student, this is the plan, you know, yesterday this happened, we need to, to move in. That communication hasn't been able to always happen.
That's where I was going with it, because at the middle school, you have the, the teams, and they get together, so it's a similar concept, just to make sure that you're building in the time, if that's the plan. I don't know how many times a week, but I didn't know how far into it you've gotten to develop the dedicated time for these three teams to get together to talk about the students that they're, you know, that are in their program. So that'll be in the fall, or by the fall.
Well, starting this spring.
Okay. The other question I have is on the RTI program. So you indicated there were three hundred and fifty students currently in that program.
Well, some students could be receiving both services. So on average, there's a hundred seventy-five sessions of ELA and a hundred seventy-five of math, but some students do receive both services.
And how many specialists do we have at this time?
Fifteen, sixteen? Sixteen.
Now, with enrollment declining, is the number holding steady? Because we talked about collecting data on the students receiving services to kind of keep track of the improvement.
What the enrollment decline has really done, that's also enabled us to service more of the K-1, 2 population, which was always, so by state sort of mandate, three, four, or five, because those are the testing grades, are the ones that you have to service. So the K-2 population was always somewhat neglected, because, just because of staffing. And the problem there is, if you don't address things early, they compound later. So we are now able to fully serve the K-2 population, and so the decline in numbers has just allowed us to pick up some more of the K-2 students, but it's also allowed us to, in the past, we've had to make, you know, you have to make your cut decisions based on where students sort of fall within the continuum, but now if we can pick up one or two students that are sort of on that bubble, it's just, you know, the more students you're serving that are struggling, obviously, the more problems you can prevent down the road.
Right, I just want to make sure that with the declining enrollment, even though we're picking up, which is great, I, I think picking up at the preschool is wonderful, that we're just not, we're looking at that every year, just to make sure.
No, we're still making tough decisions in terms of, you know, students sort of on that cut line, you know. At some point, we have to make a decision, we just don't have enough room, so it's nice to have a little bit of a buffer.
Thank you.
So we thought we'd lead off with at least some background into, you know, why the budget is needed, rather than just go directly into the numbers. So hopefully, we gave you a flavor for, you know, why we're going to be proposing some of the things that we're proposing in the budget. So first, we'll just run through some numbers by department. So these are basically, for the most part, salaries. You can see there's about a one-point-one million dollar increase, which is three-point-four percent, but nine-hundred thousand of that is in contractual salaries. We did have to increase our scoring budget. So one of the things that we've done, because of the lack of substitutes, we've moved most of our scoring from during the day to outside of the school day, so that caused us to incur some extra costs. We started the before-school program at the middle school this year, which was an ad last year, so now it's part of this baseline budget. That was about forty thousand dollars. We were able to reduce our charter school tuition and our home instruction, just based on trends over the last three years. So that makes up that. Here's just another way of looking at the same information on the top salary line. I was able to decrease the equipment budget slightly. Again, that's based on sort of the last three-year trends of what we're actually spending. BOSI services, those are contractual rates set by the BOSI's programs that we use. So for instance, IREDDY falls under the BOSI's contract. Some of our professional development falls under the BOSI's contract, things of that nature. Other operating expenses, some things that fall under there, extracurriculars, supplies, things of that nature. So overall, an increase of one-point-one, but again, nine-hundred thousand or so of that is in salaries. Here's just another, yeah?
Dave, excuse me, you mentioned charter school tuition.
Mm-hmm.
Is that because we're sending students to a charter school?
Yes.
We're not sending. Parents are.
Parents do, right. But we're, yeah. So you have to budget a certain amount of money for students to do that. And again, based on trends, we're allocating more than was necessary, but yeah. But no, you're right, we don't choose to send, parents don't choose to send. We choose to have to pay, yes. So here's just another look at the, the salaries broken down by position. It's really the same, the numbers there will total the same as on the previous slide at the top, just breaking it down by the different area rather than by department. And then here's a further breakdown, looking at, you know, teachers, substitute teachers, and so forth. You'll see our substitute line and extra help, we did need to increase miscellaneous, again, within that miscellaneous line is the middle school before-school program, which is why there's a decent-sized jump there, because it was an ad last year, so it's now part of the baseline budget.
Is the reduction in the amount for clerical hall-molling, is that breakage? There's still fifty-seven employees, let me see how it goes down by about?
No, so, breakage, right, yeah.
It is breakage?
Breakage.
Okay, thank you.
So at the elementary level, our enrollment overall is declining, not by a ton, but overall by about sixteen students. And based on the, the breakdown, we will need one fewer stu, fewer teacher at Slingerlands, and we'll be shifting one teacher from Elsmere to Glenmont. So this year, Elsmere is thirteen, Glenmont seventeen, and that'll go to twelve, eighteen. And you can see that the, the ratios there, district-wide, are still right at about that twenty-one students per one teacher ratio. And it's tough to see, but that's by section, so you can see, I mean, equaling out, you can see the number of sections at each grade level per building.
Is there any particular sense, it's difficult to see, is there particular class sizes that are over twenty-seven, twenty-eight that?
No, so the largest class size, fifth grade at Eagles at twenty-six. We've got some, fourth grade at Slingerlands is twenty-six.
Okay.
Eagles at twenty-five. But the, the primary grades, I mean, you're in high teens, low twenties.
Yeah, it's the lowest I think we've seen in a long time.
Why are those two boxes colored red?
So, thank you, just so I remind me, so at Hama Grail, currently, those two sections are second and third grade, they're just, those teachers are sort of shifting up here, just to show that the, kind of that bubble's moving. Elsmere lost a section, so the one that's highlighted in Glenmont, that's the one that they picked up, new. That was just to remind me to tell you that.
Why is Elsmere losing a section?
Elsmere's enrollment's down, and Glenmont's is up.
Any new kindergartners for Hama Grail? Because that's the same one place that they're, it's a little bit big.
And these are actually, these aren't the actual enrolled numbers to date, these are actually the number of kindergarten-eligible students that we're aware of, so those numbers typically don't even come out that high.
Oh, okay. Because otherwise, we would ship them to another school.
For sure.
Well, not until after April first.
Right.
At some.
Unless we wanted to make a kindergarten teacher really happy.
I'd never do that to kindergarten.
So based, again, based solely on enrollment, we are recommending a reduction of one elementary teacher at Slingerlands, and that's the only reduction we're recommending. In terms of additions, we have a reading teacher, but as you'll see in Kathy's budget, we have someone that's been doing sort of split special education reading for the past few years. And this year, that, the need for her to be doing special education has diminished because of our special education numbers, and she's one-hundred percent doing reading. So moving forward, it makes more sense to classify that as a reading teacher than as a special education teacher. So it's an add here, it'll show up as a reduction on the special education report. The additional music teacher, so point zero-five is a very, very small number, and you'll see when we get to the high school that we're, or the middle school, we're going to have a reduction in music. We do have one part-time music teacher, and that position would get reduced to point one-five, which isn't even one full day. So by adding the point zero-five here, that allows the part-time person to be able to do it one day at an elementary school. Because to try to fit a schedule where you don't have the whole day available to you would be next to impossible. So it's really a scheduling piece. And then adding aid coverage at both Hama Grail and Glenmont, to be more consistent with the other buildings. And then, as you're aware, Ms. Gagne did a presentation at a board meeting regarding the new science standards, and the new science standards require us to update our kits, so we are going to need money to implement the new standards. At the secondary level, these numbers are a little easier to read, but we're down, you know, approximately fifty students at both the middle and high school across the grade So because of that, we can make some adjustments in terms of class sizes there, or section counts there. So Mohawk, this is the final of that house that has the extra section. So now we'll, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, all three houses or teams will have five sections to be, so that's that reduction there. And then along with that, when we've reduced the number of sections in the past, some of the special areas, we haven't touched at the middle school. And also, you notice this year with our eighth grade, because we added two sections of high school art and two sections of high school technology, but we didn't make any adjustments to the other specials. Those classes are running with, in the neighborhood of fifteen, sixteen, seventeen students in them, so we're able to reduce so that those classes are more in the twenty to twenty-four range. So gains, grow aid support, we actually currently have grow aid support, it's just that it's classified under the special education, so you'll see in Kathy's presentation, she's looking to make a reduction of two-point-oh in aid support. It's because it's actually already serving in the, the grow program, so we're just appropriately classifying that by the budget. And then again, some added noon hour aid support to help out.
Could you just be honest with what the grow program is?
So the grow program is a program for students that are struggling academically. Typically, it's because of organizational issues, so they have supports where they meet with, there's teachers that help them manage their, their homework load, they have check-in points in the morning, check-out points at the end of the day, they make sure they have all of their assignments. The grow aides kind of coordinate with the teachers, making sure that as assignments are doing done, there's check-offs, and they're kind of helping mediate between the student and the teacher. And we have approximately fifteen students at each grade level in that. And we have seen, looking at the students that were last year's eighth graders, current freshmen, those students are, by and large, are not academically at risk as freshmen. So it's help, definitely helping. Similar at the high school, because of the enrollment and running the initial schedule, we have some adjustments that we can make to FTE, again, just simply based on student requests and enrollment. And also, when we added the Cisco networking program last year, we allocated a certain amount of funds for the networking materials. We were actually able to purchase more than we anticipated the first year, so next year we won't need, you know, the full allotment, so we're able to back down on that a little bit.
Dave, were there many classes that didn't receive sufficient enrollment that had to be cut?
There's always a few, they're still working through, because the counselors are still working on students that were, so some of those courses, there's still shuffling going around, so we're not sure which ones will or won't run. So there might be three courses, say, as a social studies elective, that none of them would run individually, but once you talk to the students in each of those, that's when you really figure out which of the three wouldn't run. So we're not quite there yet. But there will be some classes that don't run, and there will be some that haven't run in a while that are running. So like AP human geography looks like it's going to run next year.
On the reductions for the middle school and high school?
Mm-hmm.
Are we losing full-time to part-time in those numbers?
No, we're not losing any full-time FTE.
Okay.
So we have part-time positions in each of those areas that will absorb.
Okay.
Right. So no full-time impact. And we'll also be adding one-point-oh in math, that's our only add. And if you recall, we added the Siena College Computer Science course and the AP Computer Science course, and those were put within the math department. And so they've absorbed that FTE without ever having an increase, and it's coming to the point now where that's not quite as manageable, so now, we are going to ask for that add at this time. Miscellaneous, PDP Premier is a software program that we use to track professional development hours. Fortunately, the program that we use for our staff evaluations has the same capability built into it with no added cost, so we can get rid of this external program and save ten thousand. Always good.
Sounds good.
And then, I know this is something that a lot of folks have been asking for, and we're very happy to ask for adding Friday late bus runs at the middle and the high school, so that students have now four out of the five days where they have the extra bus.
I think that's great. I think the students will appreciate that. The other question I have, though, on the addition, well, it wasn't an addition, but for the Cisco networking, now you have the advanced class, you didn't have that this current year. Was there an addition in there for that? Was there an addition in there for that?
No, the, the course, the course itself was added as part of the, um, curriculum process last year. But obviously, we couldn't run it until students took level one.
Okay.
But there's no ni-
So it was already planned?
We're able to allocate that one, there's only going to be one section. We're able to allocate that within the current FTE. We don't need to add FTE in order to run it.
What did we do this year with it? Was it planning?
We added FTE, no, well, we, we added FTE last year.
Well, I know, but they didn't have a class.
Right, no, I know, but there's, um, because of enrollment, other areas where we might have had four sections, we only need to run three sections.
Okay, so it'll reduce, like, tech might reduce a section this coming year.
Right, and again, it was based on enrollment. Had the enrollment and those other sections been higher, then we might have needed to ask for.
I'm worried that the tech classes will increase significantly if we're-
Based on the initial, um, requests, they won't.
Okay.
But again, that's one of those things, year to year, as those trends change. That's why we have sort of sometimes the point two, point fours adds and reductions from year to year.
And it may change with the middle school having added the additional advanced class.
Sorry to double back, but on, uh, chart twenty, there's a, a modest increase for substitute teachers. Have we been looking at the rate that we're paying substitutes? Because I know a number of districts have increased their rates.
Right, we increased ours two years ago. And we looked, and we did look into it again this year, and we seem to fall right within that competitive range. Something we'll continue to look at.
Are we still having issues getting substitutes?
This year's much better than it has been. But, um, again, it's something we'll monitor. We continually take a look at what our rates are compared. Um, and usually the telltale sign there is where teachers, um, accept a substitute position here for the day, and then they cancel last minute because they get it somewhere else. Um, so that's also a good barometer for where our rates fall, for sure.
On that late bus run, I would just ask that you keep a general sense of how much that gets used. And if it's not being used, then you reconsider it for next year's budget.
Thank you.
And I, I just was curious with that, why Friday and not Monday?
Mondays are-
Mondays, so, yeah, three of the four Mondays, students-
Teachers are inaccessible because they have meetings.
Yeah, but typically, the first Monday is faculty meeting, second Monday is department meeting. And then the third Monday, five times a year is typically continuous improvement, so. And that's also when some other meetings take place. Clubs meet on those days, uh, I mean, it's not clubs, um, some of the, the faculty groups themselves meet on those days.
But they're accessible, the teachers are accessible on Friday?
Well, they have to be.
Now there's a late bus, they will be.
Right. But they're contractually, you know, the day ends at two-tenish, and they're contractually obligated to be early three, so.
Yeah, that's the ninth period, so kids will, if they need help, they'll, you know, they'll-
So this is the special ed section of the presentation, but I thought I would pop up here first. Because in reviewing the numbers, we determined that we needed to make a correction. And this was thanks to, I'll call it a transitional glitch with our new software. We realized we had duplicated some of the salary lines, so we need to correct that. Within the aids to students with disabilities, we had four extra positions in there that need to come out. And then there was a clerical position that was duplicated. So that total salary amount is a hundred and thirty-four thousand, which, as you'll see when we go to the program cost slides, I've already pulled that number out of there so that it's reflecting the true baseline cost. So what we're recommending, even though we need to pull that from the salary lines, we had talked when we had rolled out the budget, that there were some concerns with the extended school year program, the special ed, um, classes that are run in the summertime, that we were running short on that funding. So what we're recommending is that we simply reclassify that, pulling it out of the salaries line, and then adding that into the transfers to the summer program line item. That will bring that up to three hundred and eighty-four thousand, which is very close to what our annual share, our local share is for that program. We still, of course, are waiting to see what happens when the budget is adopted at the state. While we think there's low odds that there will be further changes to that program, we really look at that as, um, an early warning, if you will, of changes that we're probably likely to see in the out years. When we had first presented this, it's supposed to be an eighty, twenty percent split in those costs. It's really, it's not eighty percent of the total program costs, it's eighty percent of the allowable costs. So, um, in looking at what we actually get, we're closer to sixty, forty. So with close to a million dollars in expenditures, um, we would be running closer to four hundred thousand, which is why we're recommending that we put that salary correction into that transfer line item. If the changes that were proposed in the governor's budget were to come to pass, that could potentially cause us to incur another three hundred thousand in local share costs for running that program. So we're keeping a close eye on it, but are cautiously optimistic that we won't see that in those final numbers. But, um, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy for a quick second, and I'm going to stand behind you because I'm taller.
So there's been a lot of discussion about the cost of the ESY program. And I think it's been a while since I've really explained to everybody, um, what that program is. So I wanted to take a couple of minutes to do this. ESY stands for Extended School Year. We began, um, implementing this program about eleven years ago. And it's really a phenomenal program. Our staff do a great job with this program. So New York State gives us very strict guidelines on, um, students who will attend extended school year, special ed students, are students who show substantial regression. They give us information and we collect data on that throughout the year. So we look at students first when they return from, um, maybe not having summer program, or maybe having some summer program and then a three-week break before coming back. We look at, um, whether they show regression over the winter break or the Christmas break, and then again in February. So information is, is, that is given to the CSE chairs, and that helps decide which students would be eligible for this program. Program is designed, again, by state ed guidelines, to help maintain student skills. So they're not supposed to go to summer program to advance. They're supposed to just be able to maintain their skills academically and in some of the related services. The program, we set it up so that it mirrors the school year program, um, as far as the, the, uh, program options and the specials that the students receive. So we have a full-day program, which in the summer is five hours, and then we have a half-day program, which is three hours. We also provide something called specialized instruction. So if a student shows regression only in math, they could come and get just math for forty-five minutes, uh, three days a week. So, um, we're really very specifically looking at the information that we gain from our students. Related services are also part of what can be added onto the program. So that's what the program looks like.
Do all, do all the students that you evaluate that need the program, do they actually attend the program?
Um, we keep very close data on that as well, um, that we share with parents at CSE meetings. So we've set a, a guideline. I mean, sometimes parents will say, um, we're going on vacation for three weeks during the time that your summer program is running. And then we just suggest that, that they not attend. Um, so we, we really need them to be there and present to benefit from it. So, and we, we keep track of what attendance looked like last year. So we have that as the CSE chairs are doing annual reviews and looking at who would be eligible for this year. And there are families who choose not to do it, understandably. They might want their, um, child to benefit from some other kind of camp program. Um, and sometimes they do things privately. So we've had fairly good dialogue on that.
Thank you. Do we provide transportation? Does transportation to and from the program get included?
Yes, we do, we do. And we get that information from the family at annual reviews. Again, um, some families choose to drive their children themselves so that they can do another activity during the day, since a shorter day. So Judy's going to do a little bit on the rate setting.
So there's a formal rate-setting unit at the state that looks at this and gives us the, um, base tuition rates that we use. They're looking at both the district's own financial data and the costs that we submit as part of our year-end financial reporting to the state. They're also looking at regional averages, and they calculate the rates that we're subject to based on looking at these multiple factors. And then they have, you know, limits on how much they will allow. They set what that limit is, and we are bound to that amount. We looked at some of our costs to see if they fell within these averages, and we were pretty close. Because we were looking at this with an eye of, is there something that we could modify within the structure of the program in order to maximize the amount of money that we would get back? And there was nothing that jumped out at us that says, yeah, you should absolutely change this particular thing in order to maximize both the, the program benefits and the amount of money that we were able to get back on it. They have, um, fixed costs for the aid services that we are bound to. And then they have separate rates for transportation costs that come back to us. So it's moderately complex. I recall, as we were looking at this, we did have an internal audit of this area a few years ago. If you were on the audit committee then, you probably remember that. We wanted to have the auditors look at that because it was rather complex, and we wanted to make sure that we were covering everything that we needed to. Um, we still have the same staff within the district who were here then. We, we got a relatively clean report at the time. That same staff, two people primarily, are the ones who are doing this reporting. So, um, we're fairly comfortable with their knowledge of the program and what they're submitting. But we are looking at it more closely, again, because it's been a few years since we've done anything like the internal audit or done an in-depth review on our end. But, um, as we complete that in the coming weeks, if we find anything else that we think we should flag, we'll certainly bring that back to you. But that sixty, forty split that we have currently is largely driven by the limits on the reimbursement rates that the state has set for us with the program. And then I think next up?
Back to me. So, um, just like previous, uh, presenters and what Dave just did, this is, um, the special education department by type. And basically, we have, oh, I think I went, I skipped one, I apologize. There we are, that's us by our department. And basically, the entire special education department falls into three areas, special ed, health, and psychological services. And the increase there is, um, salary increases, contractual salary. So now it's, um, expenditures by type, salaries, which I just mentioned, the tuition paid to other schools, and then those BOSI services. So, um, Judy and I are going to be talking about, um, what's been going on with CAP region BOSIs in a minute. But there's been a significant increase in those costs. So let me actually get to that, so that, um, capital region BOSIs is, um, a, a, a place where we utilize their services for a number of things. Dave referenced them for some of the, uh, supports that he uses. But in the special ed domain, we use it for students that we don't have an appropriate program for in district. Um, we apply to CAP region BOSIs, um, we've done this for many, many years. This year, in the fall, they let us, uh, they indicated that they would be going through what they called a redesign and changing programming and potentially costs. A few months ago, we started to learn about some of the revamping of programming, but there were no costs associated with it. So it was only just a few weeks ago that we were notified that, um, there were some fairly significant changes to the programming and to the, uh, cost of the programming. Both Jody, Judy, and I reached out to our counterparts. We've been talking to districts, um, about those programs. And, uh, the current estimates show that, um, the increases are going to be up by roughly two hundred thousand dollars, or a seventeen percent increase. As I mentioned, um, we are actively, uh, talking with other districts and looking at, at options. But at this point, it, it does look like, um, those costs will be up fairly significantly. So, um, if I go back a slide, you'll see, um, on the third line down, the BOSI services, that one point eight, um, is the best estimate we have at this point. And if anything changes, we certainly will notify you prior to, um, finalizing the budget. But right now, that looks like, um, the best estimate that we have. I certainly want you to know myself and the CSE chairs, along with families, look at the students that we have in BOSIs on a regular basis. It is certainly not our first choice. We would like to always program for students in district. Next year, we do have, um, we have two students graduating, um, from that program. And we just were notified of two students that were moving. So, uh, that might look, you know, costs might look a little different based on that. We also have students, um, that often need a placement outside of district. We've tried everything in district, uh, academically, behaviorally, so it's something that we, that is pretty fluid throughout the year.
Kathy?
Yes.
The, the, um, the amount that you have for seventeen, eighteen is one point six.
Yes.
And one point eight nine two for going forward. Is the two hundred that you added in addition to an add you already had previously?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I talked about that. This is now taking the special education department, this is primarily salaries, um, by position. So, um, and salaries are, what, seventy percent of our costs? And, uh, they're up, um, like, one point two percent, I believe. And then this is the rest of the department, the special education department. So, um, at this point, I wanted to go over the reductions and the additions.
Can I ask you a quick question on the redesign for BOSIs?
Yes.
Just with the changes, are they, they're going to take effect come July first or September, when the students transit for the next year?
For the start of the school year. Um, one, one of the things as, um, all of us were reaching out, so I was reaching out to the director of special ed, Jody to superintendent, um, Judy to the business official. The revamping of the program, originally, they, um, planned to do that all at once. So they were changing all programs, and it was going to happen for next year. They did agree to kind of slow that process, and it's going to, um, phase in over three years. But the cost increase will be effective for next year.
Do you pay for services in a yearly, for a yearly rate they bill you for the year? Is it monthly per student in the program?
So, um, we get billed monthly, um, for students. And, um, some programs, everything is inclusive, and some is the cost of, uh, the program. And then related services would be separate. We also utilize BOSIs for some services, um, that they come into district for. For example, we, we, um, might need a teacher of the visually impaired. We have one in district, but we need, might need more than that, and we contract with them for that as well.
I just think it might be interesting, if you pick a few students that are currently in the program that are getting billed, versus the new redesign and the changes, to see actually what the changes are and if they're justifiable. Just so we have a gauge on really where is the seventeen, twenty percent coming from?
Yeah, I, I absolutely am happy to look at that very carefully. That's okay, that's okay.
Just to get a good idea, because we don't really know, I don't think, what all of the redesign is yet, just to keep a eye on what costs were being billed for.
Yes.
Kathy, on slide forty-one, um, it looks like, um, on AIDS to SWD, we have a decrease there of thirty-seven thousand dollars. What, what is that decrease coming from?
It, that's breakage from people retiring and newer people coming on board.
And is that the same with the clerical decrease?
Yes, it is.
And the same for, uh, special ed teachers?
Yes. So reductions, um, so we have reductions in three areas. And Dave- So reductions, so we have reductions in three areas and Dave referenced this a little bit. So the top one is three special education teachers. And while that looks like that would be three people leaving, I'm very happy to say it is not. So one of those three is the teacher that Dave referenced that's duly certified and she was doing both reading and special education for us and we are reallocating her to be in reading. So Dave added her in reading and I'm reducing her in special education. I referenced earlier when we were talking about the behavioral coach, that that had been one of our special education teachers who took that on for this year. And we've got things up and running, so that person is going to go back to the special ed position. So that counts as a second one. And then we have a retirement at the elementary level and our numbers have gone down at the elementary level, so we are not going to be filling that position. So that's the three special ed teachers. The speech teacher or speech pathologist is also a retirement. And again, our numbers have gone down by roughly 100 students who are receiving IEP services. So we were not recommending that we, you know, rehire that person. And then the two AIDS to students with disabilities are the reallocation of the GrowAids. Dave had mentioned those. So the last few years as we've been, as the middle school has been getting that program up and running, we were using some of the special ed AIDS part, you know, piecing them together and now we're going to allocate, allocate two people to that. And so additions. I've, I've referenced our, our commitment with BOSIs and then what's been going on Students going in and out of BOSIs is something that is not black and white. So there are students that are in district and we're work, they're working within one of our programs and perhaps really struggling or there could be a new diagnosis and we don't have all of the, the things we need within district and we might look to have a student move out to a BOSIs program. We also have had for the last few years, a number of students who have moved into district late in the summer, late July, August, who are currently in a BOSIs program and we don't have any kind of program in district. So we're requesting an additional $200,000 because we've always been able to keep a buffer in that line in case that happened. And I'm just concerned with the higher increases in the BOSIs programming this year. I have about $100,000 as a buffer in there and that could be one student. You know, there are times that you get a family that might need that or multiple kids within a few months. So I just felt uncomfortable keeping it at, at the, only having a buffer of 100,000. So that's a request. And again, I can certainly keep very close track of it.
So I'll give Kathy a little bit of a break and I'll go through the summary. So for additions, we had elementary, middle, high, miscellaneous and SES for a total of just under $500,000 in adds. And then in reductions across all of those different areas, the total came to just over 700,000. So our reductions do outnumber our additions. So that will help close the gap on the budget just a little bit more. Overall, we're looking at in both areas, you know, just over $100,000 in reductions as a net. So overall, another $250,000 will be able to come off of our gap. And I think now we're back to Judy, actually.
Hopefully, we're not making everybody dizzy with our going up and down through this presentation. What we try to show you is the corresponding sources of funds that relate to each of the programs that we've been covering each week. So for the total special education budget included within the general funds revenues, there's over $1.4 million of revenue that are directly related to the funding of these programs. So the state aid number is the largest piece of that at close to $1.2 million. We also have services that are eligible for federal Medicaid reimbursements, so we are submitting claims for that and that's close to $200,000 a year. That comes back to the district. And then we also have a small piece of funding from Albany County that relates to the preschool students that we are screening for the program, for the services.
Judy, there's a, with the Medicaid eligible services, is there anything in this budget that would give us a buffer should the federal government decide that that's a program they're no longer going to support?
We try to budget that revenue item conservatively. So if there's any tweaking of those formulas, we could absorb that. If there's a wholesale elimination, you'd feel close to a $200,000 impact. Again, it's out of a total of close to 100 million. Between all of the different revenue lines, they're never spot on in every single line item. So where we are over in some, it helps us offset where we have shortages in others. And we've been very fortunate because the last few years and you'll see when we look at where we're projecting for this year's numbers, we're also spot on with those revenue numbers. Not line by line, but in the aggregate for what we collect.
Thank you.
Judy, does the first line include high-cost aid?
Yes.
And is that mostly high-cost aid, that amount, or just a portion of it?
It varies from year to year. It's close to 50-50 between the high cost and then the, the excess cost aids that we have. That's all broken out separately on the governor's run and certainly on our detailed reports from the state.
Okay, thanks.
Additionally, not accounted for within the general fund because these are all essentially restricted grants, we have about $1.5 million of services that are running within our special revenue fund. And we like to show this to you at the budget time, just so you have an idea of how much federal funding that we're obtaining. These are not typos on the top of the slide. The numbers are a little bit older because 16, 17 is the last completed year. So these totals represent the actual audited totals for these programs. And we have a total of seven FTEs in the instructional or the IDA Special Ed Grants. We have about three within the instructional program, Title I, II and III Grants. These are not full-time positions. It's all little pieces, .2 here, .1 there, but these are salaries that are all charged into these federal grants. Okay. So if, Jonathan, you asked about changes in the Medicaid, if there were changes in any of the federal funding as it related to these grants, such that we were to lose this, we would have to either absorb those costs within the general fund or scale back on the services that were being offered potentially. It, it has been relatively stable in the last few years, so again, we just hope that that trending continues. But nothing announced yet that would affect that. Okay. So with the $2 million gap that we came into this evening's presentations with, if we factor in the net reductions from the instructional program and Special Ed, that drops our baseline expenditures down to just under $98.9 million. And when compared to the revenues that we have within the baseline, that drops us down to about a $1.8 million gap. So between now and our next meeting on April 10th, we need to collect those final pieces of information that we have been waiting for, hopefully the adoption of the state budget so that we don't have to rely on estimates, so that we can actually have known information to do these projections. And then the last piece would be to look at what kind of a tax levy increase the board is willing to put in to fund these programs. So each 1% is about 640,000. I started to do, even though it's very, very early in terms of being able to project out what the tax increases or tax rates would look like for citizens, I do start to get some very tentative numbers from the towns. And there has been some growth in the assessed values within the town of Bethlehem and then also somewhat for New Scotland. There have been some reductions in the equalization rates as well. So the good news is that whatever levy amount that is approved by the board, that levy amount is not going to translate into the same tax rate increase. Because of the growth in the assessments for Bethlehem and because of the shifts in the equalization rates for New Scotland, it would appear that New Scotland is going to see a decrease in their tax rates and the Bethlehem increase will be below whatever the levy percentage increase is. I know that's a little bit of confusing information to just tell you. I will have other information as we get closer to adopting this where I'll actually show you what those numbers look like. But it is positive news, so even though it's preliminary, I wanted to put that out there this evening as well for you. This year's budget, how are we doing? Right now, we are looking at a surplus of close to $2.2 million. If you recall what our independent auditors tell you when they come to the board each year in the fall, they recommend that we come in between 3% to 5% below our adopted budget each year. This $2.2 million is just under a 3% positive variance, if you will. And it's about where we should be. We've had these types of surpluses in prior years. It has not come so much from revenues coming in above our budget, but more so from spending less than what has been adopted within that budget amount. So with a $2.2 million approximate increase in our overall fund balance amount, that would bring us from this past June 30th, 2017 year-end where we were at 17.2 million, that will increase us to approximately a $19.4 million fund balance amount. And within that fund balance, of course, there are many restricted subcategories. So each of those reserves that are listed there are all types of reserves that school districts are allowed by law to establish with board approval, in some cases with community voter approval. But they exist solely for those purposes that are listed. So for instance, the workers' comp reserve, we are self-insured. So if we were to have large claims or large settlements with workers' comp, we would be able to tap into that reserve as a funding source. The employee retirement system reserve is to help us buffer any major fluctuations in the premiums that come to us from the state pension system. At the end of the day, that line that's listed as undesignated, by law, we cannot exceed 4% of next year's budgeted amount. So if the budget were to be adopted around 98.5 million, that would mean that we would need to keep that just under $4 million for that unrestricted portion. So as we get closer to the end of the year, as we get to the public hearing, I'll have additional updates. Obviously, it's easier to predict what the year-end is going to look like the closer we get to the end of the year and as expenditures start to slow down in supplies and other items. But it is good news. It's where we expected that we would be and I'll update you at a next presentation. I additionally, as if looking into this year's projection wasn't crystal ball-y enough for me, I also like to look forward and give the board and the community a sense of how do we look down the road. There, every year, our goal is to make sure that the budget that we adopt has a matching source of funds. We need to balance our budgets. So we know even in these out years, at the end of the day, we will have a balanced budget that is adopted by the board. But what I do is I take the various revenue line items and the expenditures and for instance, debt service. We have bonds that are issued. We know what those repayment schedules look like, so we project that out to subsequent years. We know about what the trending on our salaries should be based on the underlying contracts. We project that out. We make assumptions about the fringe benefits and that helps us project what we can expect for a baseline gap in those out years. Then based on an assumed levy increase of about 2% a year, because that's sort of in line with inflation, it's with what people think of when they think of the tax cap calculations, add a 2% levy amount per year, the difference is relatively minor. 122,000 shortfall next year, 245 the year after that, and then a surplus in the third year out. That is actually a reflection of the debt service. You're smiling because you're wondering how is that even possible? It's possible because if you think back to the capital project presentations, that's the year that we have like $4 million worth of debt service mature. So it falls right off the charts. That's the year when the new bond payments would kick in for the current capital project. So that's where that improvement in the position, so even though there's new debt, there's more older debt that would be coming off the schedule. So we still are maintaining structural financial balance for the district, which in that you've seen in both the Office of the State Comptrollers, risk analysis, you saw it in the Moody's report where they're looking at our long-term trending. So every year, we'll have its challenges for us and we'll be dealing with uncertainties in, in state aid and other funding amounts, but there aren't any worrisome trends out there.
So when you did your projections, you were using the 2% increase per year, is there a possibility that the maximum allowable tax levy limit would be under 2% in any of those years?
It's possible. It's possible. Those calculations you have to do every single year.
Right.
You're getting different factors from the state for the assessment growth, you're getting inflation factors, you have the capital exemption factors. So I haven't even attempted to crystal ball that number for you at this point, but using an analysis of prior trends and then having a sense of where they're going in the future is how we come up with these projections. So it, it is simply an indicator. I would never say to you that with 100% certainty, this is what we're going to hit, but...
So the, but the Metel could be under 2%?
It could be.
It could be.
It could be. And then we would need to reduce, reduce either expenditures or increase revenue. You know, you would just, we have many different line items and things that we can control that would help us deal with that.
And certainly, state aid could fluctuate.
Sure.
Yeah. We're accustomed to dealing with curveballs and unexpected things, so, okay. So as a reminder, the board had approved the replacement of 15 buses at a cost not to exceed 1.19 million. This will appear as a separate proposition on the ballot when voters come to the polls in May because it's a capital expenditure. Even though the board has approved it, we by law cannot make this expenditure without public approval as well. We also will have two vacant seats on our board. As had been announced previously, both Lynn and Charmaine are not running again. So if anybody is interested in serving on the Board of Education, we encourage them to talk to a board member and find out what it's really like to be on the Board of Education and then also to pick up your nominating petitions from Brittany Barrett, the district clerk, and then get those back to us by April 16th. Okay? Next meeting is April 10th, that is a Tuesday. And then followed, and that will be the night that we will have to adopt the budget. We're on a fairly strict statutory timeline because there are notices that have to be appearing in the newspaper, we have to have our public hearing and all of it is, are things that have to occur prior to that budget vote on the 15th. So if for some reason the state did not adopt their budget on time, we still would have... So if for some reason the state did not adopt their budget on time, we still would have to adopt our budget on time. So we would just do that with the best assumptions that we have at this point. Okay?
Can I just clarify, especially for the newer board members? So you're going to come to that meeting, the district, with proposals on how to close that gap?
Mm-hmm.
But then the board will have to make the decision based on your proposals and the discussion at the table?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're also missing the April 25th meeting.
April 25th?
That's just the budget meeting, sorry.
Is it that, the BOSI's meeting or is that...
No, no, no. It's just a regular board meeting.
Oh, okay.
These are just the budget ones.
Okay, I can add that.
Judy, when you come to us at the next meeting to close that gap, can we have it set out so that there's a priorities as to what different items we can either accept or not and what priority you want them or the people that are proposing them, what they want them in?
Yeah, we will include in total what the best options are, what our recommendations are. I mean, we have already scaled back. I mean, there were other things in the other areas that people would have liked to have add, added to the budget, but we knew that it was going to be a leaner year in terms of state aid that we would see and that we would need to close this gap. So there has already been restraint in that regard. So what is recommended previously is ideally what we would like to see included, but if you are not comfortable adding those changes, yeah, we can maybe have...
I mean, there's not a lot of additions on the dollar amount. You don't have to add anything.
And in some cases, the reductions outweigh the additions, but... Well, so what I assume you're going to do is you're coming with a series of tools that are going to result in a certain amount off of that, that gap, and then the board decides which of those tools or some additional tools that they want to suggest to reduce that amount.
Right. We could get another 100,000 in state aid. I mean, they're talking that the odds are good, that there would be some more money in the foundation aid lines. But what we've typically seen is while there's a large part of money available statewide, not a large chunk of that comes to us. But it could happen, so that's one of the things that we will report back on at the next meeting as well.
Is there any additional information that hasn't been presented that the board needs clarification on for the next meeting or...
But this is, it's less presentation and more discussion at the table.
Yes.
So we'll be talking with each other about...
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hertz, Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. Kehoe. At this time, we'd like to recognize any visitors on an agenda item. Item number eight, finance. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through three.
So move second.
Any discussion? I just wanted to thank the middle school PTO for donating money to the Bethlehem High School VEX Robotics Team. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through seven.
So move.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries. Item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through two.
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question? We're going through this so fast. I did have a question. On, you know, I think it's really great, it's under the professional section, you know, the amount of professional development that our staff has actually attended. But I wondered if there's anything there that, there were quite a few attended things on, on writing recommendations for students for college, that someone that, you know, maybe people could act as turnkey, you know, that if they, you know, some people attend and they can actually share what they learn with others.
That's actually done all in-house. So that's our teachers run sessions after school here in the LMC and they help teachers learn the process and they help them walk through the writing of recommendations. But that's done in-house with our own staff, yeah.
Oh, okay. But anyhow, but it was an impressive list, of course.
And that's just the folks that choose to turn in for stipend. Not everyone does. And also, if the district pays for you to attend the professional development, you can't then turn around and turn in for stipend. So that's just a very, very small piece of the amount of professional development that's going on.
Well, that's great. Very impressive. Sorry.
Well, I don't, did we do all in favor on the item number 10, support personnel?
Just do it again.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, motion carries?
Oh, that's okay.
Item number 11, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through two.
So move.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a, on the policy, students with disabilities participating in school district programs, if you could just project that. There is a section, I think it's further down, towards the very end, there was some text added that said, "or programs that rent space from the district." That one right there. So it says students with disabilities. I wasn't sure what that meant.
Like Boy Scouts rent space?
Right. So, so like the basketball clubs and things like that. So I'm reading the whole thing again because I had a question about this.
I think there should be a comma after the word curriculum.
Well, I'm not even sure about that grammar. I'm just thinking that, does that say that they shall not include, so kids can or cannot participate in those programs? I don't have the whole policy in front of me.
I think what it's saying is if we rent space to, let's say, a Broadway-bound camp over the summer, that it's not applicable because it's not a school-related...
We can't control.
We can't control whose participants...
Right. I would make sure that's what it says because when I read it, I thought it said they can't be in those programs.
No, it's just excluding them from the policy.
Didn't we remove or hosted?
Okay. Do we need to take a look at this again?
Didn't we remove or hosted?
Yeah.
That was the school's out question.
Yeah, we had removed or hosted.
Or hosted, right?
Yeah.
Should be removed.
Do you want to take a look at that again or...
No.
Does this good?
We had a long discussion about it, so it should...
So it's the only thing that's...
Okay.
Well, it's, okay, it says that, I'm trying to read the purple, sorry, I didn't have the policy ready. It says that they can participate in all curricular activities and non-academic activities offered or hosted in their home schools with or without, got it? This shall not include field trips, which are part of the district's, okay, and are open only to students who participate in or programs that rent space from the district. So I'm reading that as saying they don't participate in that.
Yeah, I guess that it's a little, it's a little bit confused.
If they don't participate in the academic program, but they do participate in the Boy Scouts, they could go. I don't think that's what we had.
The way it's currently written, it says you're excluded from programs that are rented.
Hold this and go back.
Yeah, I think it needs to be revisited.
Yeah, so I read that last sentence, I read it as, yeah.
I know we got rid of or hosted.
It should probably be two sentences where you're talking about one where it's an exclusion and the other one...
It sounds like they're excluded from those other programs. So it says there's some ambiguity, can you just check that?
I would move that we table this until the next board meeting.
Yeah, that's what they said, they're going to go back and look at it.
Yeah, well, probably bring it back to the next policy meeting.
So we need to...
Yeah, second it.
Okay.
Jonathan.
So you're taking that one off?
Yep.
You need to take a moment.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't, all in favor. We're going to table policy number 4321.
14.
14. Okay.
So he moved, he said, so we have to, we have to vote on it or not?
You have to vote on the motion to table.
Yes, can we have a motion to table policy number 432114?
All right, Jonathan did, I seconded it.
Seconded it, they just have to vote on it.
All right, so motion, we'll go back to other action items to approve that.
No, you have to vote on that.
No, we have to vote on this now.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry.
Any abstention, motion carries? So then we'll go back and we'll revote on the other items. Other action items, motion to approve. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through two.
So move.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any, any extensions?
Wait, you want to say something?
Okay, motion carries. Do you have, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Any, at this time, is there any visitors here on a non-agenda item? You can come up to the mic and state your name.
My name is Joseph Sia. I'm a parent of Courtney Sia and also JD Sia. My son's in middle school, my daughter's a junior in high school. I have a prepared statement that I'd like to read to you. Hopefully, I can get it done in three minutes. I do have copies for the Board of Education and the superintendent as well. Thank you Superintendent Monroe and the Board of Education for allowing me to speak here tonight. Let me start by relating to you a conversation that I had with Athletic Director Len Keys last spring regarding the policy that if a student athlete misses a practice, that they are required to sit the following game. This conversation initially started through an anonymous email that I used for the express purpose of keeping the conversation objective and protecting my daughter from any form of retaliation. But unfortunately, I inadvertently signed my name to one of the replies and so Mr. Keys knew who I was and who my daughter is. During a subsequent phone conversation, we discussed that supposedly from the district's standpoint, that this policy is to ensure that players remain dedicated to their teams and the district. Last year, as part of the JV softball team, my daughter was required to sit for three games during, due to missing three practices during, or because during the April break, we went on a family vacation to the Bahamas. I related to Mr. Keys that I disagreed with his policy and did not appreciate as a father that my family time was being intruded upon, especially at a time, excuse me, especially at a time when the district was technically closed. Mr. Keys indicated that scheduling is often, is often difficult at that time of year, especially with weather possibly having a huge impact, but to me, this is no excuse for limiting family time. Perhaps it is the limitation of family time for such trivial events as scheduling a ballgame that is what's wrong with today's society and why we have so many large-scale and impactful violent events, especially in and because of our schools. Mr. Keys suggested that I wait for the team rosters to be announced before going on vacation, which is nothing more than a bureaucratic response, since in many cases, vacations are often planned well in advance. And in this case, being international was initiated almost a year prior to tryouts. If this, if this policy is to ensure dedication, then it is misguided in its intent because I can assure the Board of Education that there is no more dedicated player to her sport, team, and school than Courtney Sia. Perception is reality and to punish a player for going on vacation with their family is surely a consequence that does not fit the quote crime. Mr. Keys patronized me by saying that he was in the same boat with his own family, but in spite of this, refused to consider my point of view that perhaps this policy should be, at least be modified. In spite of all this, my daughter served her quote sentence after having committed no crime, other than spending time with her family, and in fact, has never violated any aspect of the code of conduct. During the same subsequent phone conversation, we also discussed some of the unwritten policies used with the baseball program. With my younger son trying out for the modified baseball team the following year, now currently, we also discussed the well-known yet unwritten policy that seventh graders trying interscholastic sports for the first time are often not chosen for the teams they try out for. This is especially true for seventh graders trying out for the modified baseball team to the point where I personally know of several players that did not even try out for the team and seventh graders full well knowing that they're going to be discriminated against because of their grade level. It is indeed a huge problem when, when students are discouraged to the point of not even trying out for specific teams, knowing that they will not be given a fair tryout. Mr. Keys defended this policy by suggesting that eighth graders were taking over seventh graders due to the modified team possibly being their last opportunity to play organized baseball. I suggested modifying the policy to allow for the development of seventh graders to ensure a competitive team is put in place each year, or to possibly expand the program to have a seventh and eighth grade team. Mr. Keys was polite. Neither of us cursed or yelled at each other, but in retrospect, I must have been naive to think that this disagreement would not have an impact on team selection and playing time for my children. The following fall, my daughter, having been the leading scorer on the JV field hockey team, tried out as a junior for the varsity level and was cut with no clear explanation other than there, there weren't a lot of students trying out, which suggests that some students were targeted for demotion. It was later revealed that sophomore players were taken over Courtney. Let's put this in perspective. The leading scorer at the JV level the previous year was cut from varsity in favor of younger players that had not even proven themselves at the JV level, much less the varsity level. This, of course, contradicts the unwritten policy of taking older players, as an example of which the aforementioned modified baseball tryouts, where older players are automatically taken over younger players. The lack of consistency leads one to believe that their children are being targeted and that excuses are being made to parents when they seek rational explanation. In this case, my son is a seventh grader who is walking into a situation where he was bound to be discriminated against because, because he is younger, while my daughter was discriminated against because she was older. Actual talent seems almost irrelevant. To make matters worse, Courtney was promised to be brought up to varsity if she played well, and additionally, letters from the coaches would be provided to show prospective colleges why she was playing JV as a junior, which typically results in being passed over for scholarships. Neither promise came to fruition. Mr. Keys tried to explain that there was more to team selection, i.e. intangibles such as assisting the coaches with daily tasks, maturity, and dedication to the sport. I knew at that point that Mr. Keys was providing a bureaucratic excuse, since he was obviously unaware that Courtney routinely assisted with carrying equipment for the coaches, even assisting with in-game paperwork after a car accident sidelined her with a concussion. Mentored other players, both on the team and younger field hockey players in local rec leagues, that not only showed maturity, but her dedication to her number-one sport. My daughter still played at the JV level in spite of being cut from varsity, was named co-captain and led the team to double, excuse me, led the team to double-digit wins, one loss, and one tie. The varsity squad did not fare very well from a record standpoint and one has to wonder if they would have been better off by taking a more mature player such as Courtney as opposed to less experienced players. Fast forward to this year's softball tryouts where Courtney excelled in several aspects as she always has, including hitting, fielding, speed, excuse me, speed and throwing. Not only was she cut from tryouts from the varsity team, but she was told by the varsity coach that juniors were not being taken at the JV level, once again demonstrating that Bethlehem athletes under Mr. Keys' leadership was practicing discrimination relative to grade level and age. The varsity coach indicated to Courtney that she did not have the arm strength to throw the ball from the outfield to the infield, but this is an outright lie, as I have personally seen her make tremendous throws from the outfield while playing on her travel teams. One in particular that stands out was a throw in a Gilderlinge tournament from right field to home plate that resulted in the runner being tagged out at home. Because I know for a fact that Courtney does have, in fact, the arm strength, this leads me to believe that the coaches are either lacking in their talent evaluation skills or my daughter is somehow being discriminated against. Either way is an indication that the current set of coaches needs to be removed. Please keep in mind that Coach Niffen was Courtney's travel coach the previous summer and did not utilize her talents properly, even when she did get into games. One other prominent softball parent indicated to me later on that Courtney quote, "got screwed" on Coach Niffen's team, meaning playing time and in the proper position. Coach Niffen is therefore also aware that any throwing issues were due to tendonitis and not ability, which again leads to a false justification for cutting her from varsity because at least one coach with a voice knows the truth about her arm strength and any throwing issues were due to injury. It should not be, it should be noted that many of the players disagreed with Coach Niffen's philosophy on that travel team, to only play hard on the last day of a given tournament, which are typically single-elimination games, as opposed to games that determine the seeding. Coaching decisions based on this philosophy were often inconsistent and biased. Furthermore, asking players to play soft and then turn it on does not instill and allow a winning can-do attitude to take root. Lastly, it should be noted that Courtney and other players were threatened by the coaches with being kicked off that travel team if they played in the Tomboys' rec league championship game because of a tournament conflict that the coaches created and knew could happen. This was in spite of the fact that the rule for Tomboys' league has always been that the rec team takes precedence. In other words, her travel coaches, Coach Niffen included, created a bad situation for the players, misinterpreted league policy, and then threatened their players of being kicked off the team to compensate for their incompetence. Furthermore, after the travel team season concluded, Courtney sought, sought out better opportunities with other teams and did not want to play for the Bethlehem travel team for several reasons, including Coach Niffen's philosophy, an unethical threat, and the fact that she would have been the only catcher, which she did not want as she was looking to switch to the outfield. She was not only, not the only player, as the majority of players left for other better opportunities. There is no doubt that the disbandment of the Coach Niffen-led travel team is now being at least partially blamed on Courtney. And not coincidentally, Coach Niffen, according to Mr. Keys, had a say in cutting my daughter completely out of the Bethlehem softball program, which was no doubt retaliatory continuation since she was prevented from cutting her from the travel team due to league rules. But here and now is being allowed to do so under the auspices of a supposedly legitimate tryout. My daughter said to me two days after being cut that because she felt the tryout, her tryout was good enough to make varsity, that the decision to cut her felt predetermined. I find it disgraceful and completely unprofessional for Bethlehem administrators, in particular Mr. Keys, and the softball coaches under his charge, to stoop to personal bias and discriminatory practices in order to completely cut out a talented and dedicated athlete. Therefore, I will be filing an appeal with the Commissioner of Education on behalf of my daughter. And as suggested relief, we'll be recommending that Mr. Keys and the softball coaches involved resign from their positions and as the student athletes in this district deserve a fair and discriminatory free tryout. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sure, you can bring them up and hand them. Is there anybody else here on a non-agenda item? Future meeting, meetings and events.